Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. Clerk to the Board, Tony Marnik; County Council, Stephen Madcor; Commissioner West is out of the office on military leave. Roll call, Commissioner Savis.
President.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you prompt us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual time, which is at the end of our regular business. We have a special topic under Public Communication tonight. We will take that as listed on the agenda. If you would like to speak, please make sure to fill out a blue testimony card on the table and put it in the basket. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you please introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. Before I do, you have a full agenda tonight, Commissioners, and we will get through everything on the agenda. We do intend and need to end this meeting no later than 9:00 p.m., which is in three hours, but I'm sure we can make this all work in that time. With that, first up is a presentation, update on the 2024 Oregon State Legislative Session. We have a state legislator, Representative Hartman, with us as well, who will also give some brief remarks, but we'll start with our staff. For some brief remarks, Tonia Holowetsky, interim Director of Public and Government Affairs, and Trent Wilson, interim Government Affairs Manager. Please come forward and go ahead.
Welcome, and please introduce yourself.
Tonia Holowetsky, interim Director, Public and Government Affairs.
Trent Wilson, interim Government Affairs Manager.
So, good evening, Chair Smith, Commissioners. We are joined today hopefully by two special guests. One is on his way, members of the Clackamas State Legislative Delegation. I'm pleased to report that policies and funding stemming from the 2024 legislative session were favorable to Clackamas County. The county's top legislative priority, the Clackamas Courthouse Replacement Project, received an additional $15 million toward the state match. County staff worked hard to make that possible, but it would not have happened without the support of our Clackamas Caucus, including those members who are in the room today. Tonight is really a chance to celebrate the wins and make room for our delegation members to share their highlights about the session. PGA will share a full report of the legislative session, including outcomes for Clackamas County, at the policy session on April 10.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to hand it off to Trent to share a couple of additional highlights and introduce our guests.
Thank you very much, Tonia, and good evening, Commissioners. As Tonia mentioned, we're very pleased about the courthouse funding and the support we received from our delegation to achieve it. Our total request was for $21 million to complete the state match. We received $15 million, leaving a $6 million gap, and we'll work in the next couple of weeks to figure out why there is a gap. I do want to note this year, though, that the legislature only bonded $45 million in capital construction bonding, also called general obligation bonds. That's how they fund these projects. So, our $15 million request represents a third of what the state legislature authorized and is the highest project authorized in that bucket. So, it's really a generous and substantial amount of funding from the legislature. I don't want to steal too much thunder from our guests who are here to celebrate with us, but I do want to flag one more win for Clackamas County, and that's a $4 million allocation for the county's 23-hour Crisis Stabilization Center project. This project was very well received by legislative leadership and still is an example of how Clackamas County continues to lead on issues around behavioral health as well as addiction resource infrastructure. So, it's a really big win. Our full delegation supported this request and this project, but I want to highlight Representative Gambo, who worked pretty hard on this one in particular because it's in his district, the project is. He was going to join us this evening, but unfortunately got deterred by some family issues. And so, without further ado, I'm pleased to introduce Representatives Vanessa Hartman and Representative James Heeb to come up. And as they do, I just want to say, I want to thank them and thank you both for your support of the session. Thanks for inviting me into your office and hearing the priorities of Clackamas County, and thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you, Trent and Tonia. Would the two representatives please come forward? Go ahead, Representative Hartman. You can go first, and please introduce yourself.
Yes, thank you. I was wondering how much I have to carry the formal Chair Smith, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Vanessa Hartman. I am the State Representative for House District 40 Gladstone in Oregon City, and thank you for having us this evening. I will give just a brief overview of some of our office priorities and then some of just general wins for the county as well. I do a lot of work in the domestic violence space, try to fix loopholes and issues within some of our statutes. And we had quite a big win this year with our Victims' Rights Package, which increased access to justice of victims of what we call revenge porn. There was a word in statute that was causing some issues, the word identifiable, which means the layperson had to identify the image even if the perpetrator said that it was that person's image. So, we were able to pass that with, I think, ended up with 52 sponsors, bicameral, bipartisan, unanimously across both chambers and on its way to be signed by the governor. In addition to that package, it was expanding our restraining order filing options. And so, before this legislation, you were only allowed to file where you or your abuser lived instead, and you could not file where the abuse occurred. So, in the tri-county area, you can imagine someone living in Washington, Clackamas, and then working in Multnomah, they were unable to file in Multnomah. So, now, again, another piece that was unanimously supported, we will be allowed to do that, and I want to thank DA Wentworth for his support through this process. One of the other bills that I championed that unfortunately didn't make it into the House Bill 4002 package was a pill press ban, and so banning the use of personal pill presses in the state. I have every intention of bringing this back in 2025 and hope to see that as a target for those sort of larger, more operational drug dealers. I think the big one that while wasn't a bill, but as you all can imagine, I wouldn't leave this room without celebrating with you all is the fact that tolling is no longer an option at the moment, so we can have a little bit of reprieve, and we can all smile and be happy about that decision that was made on Monday, which took us all by surprise. And so, I'm very thankful for everyone in this room, specifically Commissioner Savis, for being with me during the subcommittee and helping me really learn about the history and the historical context. If ODOT would say something, I would get a lovely text message like, "That's not true," in a more formal way. But it was such a great experience to see us all come together across the county and really, really showcase over this subcommittee in the past eight months that there is indeed an issue, and there was an issue. And so, really what the next couple of months will be and the next session will be is really about that implementation and really how we're going to sustainably fund ODOT. So, those were some of my personal wins this year. As Trent had mentioned, we received quite a bit of funding. In addition to the $4 million that T had already mentioned, we also secured $4 million, I wish 40, $4 million for Parrot Creek to create 40 new beds, $1.5 million for Bridges to Change, which is a Housing and Operational Support Center. We also secured in that House Bill 4002, $20.7 million for Clackamas County law enforcement to set up a deferment program. And then the last two that we were really proud of was a $2 million for construction of the Oregon City Resource Center that will be partnered with Father's Heart, as well as $720,000 for Free on the Outside, which is to purchase a reentry home in Clackamas Counties to support people that are leaving incarceration. So, it feels like a really big win, but I know we always have more work to do. But I really appreciated the Clackamas Caucus and the work that we do together. So, again, thank you for having us.
Well, thank you for coming forward. We appreciate that as well. We've worked hard in Clackamas County to try to deliver services, and it's nice when we have some money to do it with. Thank you. Up next, please introduce yourself.
Yeah. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is James Heeb, House District 51, so Canby, Estacada, Sandy. But yeah, to double up on a lot of what the rep here also mentioned is, we did get a lot of funding all around the state, a lot of treatment facilities. And I was even down here on Main Street here in Oregon City, I was down there touring one today. I know it's not in my district, but I know the people involved in the project, and they're popping up all over the place. And I think that the state is bringing mental health care back to Oregon on a, yeah, big way. But yeah, a couple of those budget notes, yeah, that Crisis Stabilization Center, the $4 million for Parrot Creek for troubled youth, Bridges Change, and then some for 4D Recovery and Iron Tribe Network. Their 4D Recovery, the gentleman that's the director of that, I actually met a couple of years back at, he had an anonymous meeting, and yeah, and he had similar family stories. And through the years, he's grown in his role of providing treatment within the community, and it's been nice to partner with them and see the progress. I did get one bill passed this last time around, but it was kind of a technical fix for the partnership between the OLCC and the Canby community, because there's going to be a $120 million warehouse built there in Canby. And there were some, a couple of technical fixes that need to be made so that they could proceed. I've also been active on the Veterans Committee and working with the new director of the VA or the Oregon Department of Veteran Affairs, and we were able to budget $35 million for the Roseburg Veterans Home, so it should house about 300 of our elderly veterans, and we're going to be prioritizing those that are homeless right now. And so, that's a state match of 35 million, and the feds are going to chip in the other 65 million. And realistically, we're probably going to need to go back for five to 10 more next session, but so far, the governor has said that it's one of her priorities, and I'm going to hold her to the fire and make sure that happens. But I'm sure there's something, oh, I guess childcare. I also serve on the childcare committee, and there is a lot happening there, and we're, it's been exciting to see the progress in different policies change so that we can start bringing affordable, affordable quality childcare to our communities, and especially those that are in what they call childcare deserts. And so, a lot of places outside of my district, but still in our community, that never had childcare available to them now are being able to get childcare, and their families have been able to get on the employment-related daycare and get back to work and enter the, yeah, work first. And I think that's about it for this evening.
Thank you. Do Commissioners have any qualifying questions or comments for these two guests?
I just wanted to say...
Commissioner Scholl?
I'd just like to thank everybody in the Clackamas Caucus for all your work. It's much appreciated. Thank you.
Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, well, I want to thank both Representatives Hartman and Heeb for all their support on the Clackamas Caucus and all the issues we fought on and everything you've laid out here today. So, thank you, deep thanks. Just coincidence here that you're here tonight, and we have a crowd who lives off of Stafford Road in that area, and that's one of the diversion routes for all the tolling that we're hoping the governor takes the next step and cancels the Abernathy Bridge Toll. That's the only thing we're waiting for, and it's good news that the RMPP is canceled. So, I really appreciate all your hard work, the partnership with the cities, all the meetings we've been in together, and everyone else, the city, the mayors, the councilors. It's been a county team lift, so I just want to thank you all. Diversion through Canby is a big issue. I was doing a crowd the other, about two weeks ago, and we're talking about the diversion through Canby being a big issue.
Yes, sir.
So, we're fighting, and I think we're closer than we've ever been, so keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah. If I may, Chair, one thing I can add to that note is I've also mentioned to our congressional delegation that there might be an alternative funding approach for some of our interstate highways, because originally it was called the Interstate Highway Defense System. So, it was originally built along the I-5 corridor for national security purposes, and nobody's really milled around the idea of tapping into, you know, the National Defense Appropriations Fund, which is way bigger than, yeah, a lot of the other budgets. So, yeah, she told me, might want to follow up with Crinshaw, and he might be able to help on that one. But keep my fingers crossed, it's early right now, but I'm going to stay on him about it.
Well, thank you very much for coming this evening. We appreciate it. Keep up the good work, and I know we'll be in contact for further issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gary, what's up? Next.
Thank you, Chair. Next is a public hearing. Item 1, second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 5.01, Animal Licensing, Services, and Enforcement. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Chair Smith, over to you.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing and state that in the interest of time, this hearing will be continued to our regularly scheduled business meeting on March 21, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. for testimony, discussion, and deliberation. And we will not be taking public testimony at this evening business meeting on this issue. I will remind the public that they also must submit written testimony to BCC@clackamas.us. I will now close the public hearing. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Chair. Next is the consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Elected officials, item 1, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item 2, approval of a board order authorizing a purchase order with Ditech Incorporated for the purchase of 55 Panasonic Toughbooks docking stations and DVD drives. Purchase order value is $162,452.40. $37,364.05 funded through the Sheriff's Operating Levy, $34,115 funded through the Enhanced Law Enforcement District, and $90,973.35 funded through budgeted county general funds for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Technology Services, item 1, approval of a new construction contract with Roth Communications Incorporated for broadband expansion in the government camp area. Total value is $298,800. Funding is through the Clackamas Broadband Exchange, ARPA Broadband Expansion Fund. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development, item 1, approval of a grant request to the Oregon Department of Transportation for support of transportation safety planning and implementation projects. Total value is $1,271,475.94. Grant request is for $1,017,500 in matching funds of $253,975.94 for three years. Funding through state, grant, and match through County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. County Administration, item 1, approval of a board order delegating authority to sign irrevocable letter of credit with U.S. Bank to meet the qualifications of the Oregon City Type II Land Use Decision for the Replacement County Courthouse. Letter of credit value is $1 million, to expire on March 3, 2028. Funding is through budgeted county general funds in the Courthouse Capital Fund. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything off of this consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Schrader has moved we approve the consent agenda, and Commissioner Savis has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes for zero. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as Water Environment Services Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
This is the consent agenda for the Water Environment Services Board of Directors. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Item 1, approval of Amendment Number 1 with OTAC Incorporated for engineering services necessary for the design and construction management of Phase 2 of the upper Kellogg Capital Improvements. Amendment value not to exceed $587,483.20. Contract value increased to $875,324.78. Funding is through county allocated ARPA funds and the Water Environment Services Surface Water Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item 2, approval of a resolution of necessity and purpose authorizing the acquisition of easements and fee property by good faith negotiations, if possible, and condemnation, if necessary, for the Mount Talbert Realignment Project. Total project value is $1,066,000. Funding is through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item 3, approval of a resolution of necessity and purpose authorizing the acquisition of necessary easements and fee property by good faith negotiations, if possible, or condemnation, if necessary, for the multiple pump station upgrades project. Total project value is $9,600,000. Funding through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Director wish to remove any item off this consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for the approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Director Scholl has moved for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda, and Director Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Director Savis?
Aye.
Director Schrader?
Aye.
Director Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a Water Environment Services Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Up next is Public Communication, for which most of you are in the room here for tonight. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of more consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is somewhat limited to three minutes, although I have a couple of exceptions in this pile. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. We have many blue cards here in the pile on the PGE Tonquin Project, as per our agenda, and also a few other items, but first I will take PGE. I want to clarify some things about what we're doing here tonight. This is not a Clackamas County project. This is not a Clackamas County project. So, no board votes or decisions will be made tonight. The purpose of this meeting is to offer a public forum for the community to share your concerns. I have invited representatives from PGE, along with county staff, to address questions as they come up. We've never offered this kind of opportunity at one of our business meetings, so I'm asking for a little patience for everyone. Before we get started, I'll ask the planning staff to take a few minutes to give a brief update on where we are with the ZDO amendment process relating to the siting of public utilities. DTD Director Dan Johnson, you can come sit at the side table, please. We've reserved the side table for our subject matter experts in the room. Dan?
Chair Smith, Commissioners, thanks so much for having us here tonight. My name is Dan Johnson. I'm the Director of the Department of Transportation and Development. And planning is, I am blessed to have the planning department in my portfolio. Couple of things I just want to highlight for the community and the board. I guess first and foremost, it's important to remember utilities take a variety of different forms and provide a variety of different services. Some are above ground, some are below ground. Some are linear, some are site-specific. So, when we talk about this discussion around amendment for the code, there's a lot of different nuances to the utilities that we're discussing. It's important to note that historically, staff had interpreted the zoning and development ordinance, the part of the county code that regulates land use in Clackamas County, to allow public utilities outright in rights of way in most cases. There was a question raised requesting staff in conjunction with county council to reassess. That reassessment resulted in the change of policy, generally requiring a conditional use permit for new or alteration of nonconforming use permit for existing utilities outside of natural resource zones. In light of this change in policy and total scope of the various utilities, various types running to and through Clackamas County, staff approached the board with direction whether or not to amend our current zoning and development ordinance if it was warranted. The board agreed a reassessment of current criteria was warranted, and staff is advancing a discussion, I'll highlight a discussion, regarding a possible amendment. That's ZDO 288. Again, ZDO 288. This amendment is currently under consideration by the Planning Commission, which is an advisory board on land use issues to the Board of County Commissioners. Testimony during that process will help form the recommendation to the board. The board is scheduled to hear basically the Planning Commission recommendation sometime in June, I believe. If there is interest in this proposed amendment, we would urge anyone interested in this discussion to be a part of the Planning Commission process. The Planning Commission hearing is currently scheduled for April 8 at 6:30 p.m. It'll be using the Zoom platform. You can contact Joy Fields, who's a part of our planning department, or you can go to the Planning Division website for more details. Lastly, a couple of quick bullets here, one of which is, I want to highlight the fact that the board has taken no action to alter the current standards at this time. There's been no action by the board. You haven't even heard a proposal regarding this. You've heard a concept and ideas. Staff is coordinating with PGE, like any other applicant, to assess what land use approvals will be needed for the project in question. Per county code, it's clear, in some areas, a conditional use or an alteration of a nonconforming use will be required. As to these two land use applications, the conditional use and the alteration of the nonconforming use, per county code, the board has no role in reviewing those. Essentially, those go through, nine times out of 10, go through our hearings officer, staff recommendation. An independent hearings officer makes that final decision on that issue. That issue is in appealable to Luba. That's all I have. We'll be here to answer any questions you might have, or the public may have, as we go forward.
Thank you, Dan. To be clear, the Planning Commission, who is appointed volunteers, hear this subject. They will make a decision that is then goes to our hearings officer, who is an independently appointed lawyer.
So, the Planning Commission will make the recommendation to you. The hearings officer would hear the conditional use and/or the alteration. Pardon me. The hearings officer would hear the alteration or the nonconforming use application. You would get the recommendation from the Planning Commission, but the Planning Commission would take into consideration comments they may hear from the public that may shape and modify or adjust that.
Okay, let's explain this again, because, okay, the Planning Commission makes a decision.
They develop a, they take public information and feedback, and they develop a recommendation for the Board of County Commissioners to consider.
Okay, and then what does the Board of County Commissioners do?
Essentially, they have the ability to review and act or deny any proposed amendments to our code.
And then when does it go to the hearings officer?
That would not, that would be appealable to Luba. I can't remember. The proposed amendments to the zoning and development ordinance would first go to the Planning Commission, and then it would go to you. Any conditional use permit application or alteration of a nonconforming use application would go to the hearings officer. It wouldn't come to you.
So, there's two different actions being considered.
That's correct.
Explain those two different actions one more time, very slowly.
Staff has proposed amendments to the zoning and development ordinance related to the siting of public utility facilities outside of natural resource zones. Those will go to the Planning Commission in due course, and then those ZDO amendments would come to you. Separate from the ZDO amendments, PGE could apply for a conditional use permit or alteration of a nonconforming use. That would go to the hearings officer. Both decisions, the ZDO amendments and any application by PGE, could be appealed to Luba.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. It is complicated, and that's why I'd ask for point of clarification. And you can always ask again, okay? So up next, thank you, Dan, for doing that. We will now welcome the PGE staff. Senior Vice President Larry Beckdahl, would you please come forward and take a seat next to Dan, over here, please? Introduce yourself, and you have a presentation, I understand. Tony?
Good evening, Chair Smith, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good to be here with you and to be here with the public and many of our customers. This is a complicated project, as you say, and so we want to spend just a couple of minutes to explain, and then hopefully move into question and answer. And I appreciate Director Johnson, your explanation on both those issues. I think it provides a lot of clarity, so thank you. I don't know if we can share, I do have two other representatives with me that both, I don't know if we can jump in.
Yeah, please sit here, you're fine.
Jennifer Sandhouse, who is with our project management group, and then also Meredith Armstrong, who's with our property group and assisting. So if we were to jump into the project, and I don't know if we, do we have slides?
We do.
All right. I want to describe quickly the project itself. We go to the next slide. I'm going to look into the side here to make sure. There we go. We have a quick drawing, and I apologize, it's hard to see, I'm sure, from everybody's vantage point, but what you're seeing in front of you, the orange line I'll call attention to, that is the Tonkin Transmission Line, but you can see kind of a reddish line off to the, and the Tonkin coming down from kind of the Lake Oswego, southwest, all the way down to, towards Wilsonville, and then over to Tuolleton. We have a substation involved in Tuolleton, directly where one of the large pumping stations for the new water line is located. Total line there on that orange is approximately seven and a half miles, and feeds all the way down. And I think, as we start to look at these facilities, they were originally, the distribution facilities were built in the 40s, much of it. And so I'd like to go to the next slide, which describes a little bit of what's been happening, and when we consider Clackamas County has grown 52% since 1990. You look at Wilsonville, at almost 290%, Tuolleton at 90%, West Lynn at 67%, Sherwood 575%, and Lake Oswego 35%. And virtually, the last that we built of any transmission in this area was back in the 70s. And what we're calling to attention is that growth has been happening, and it continues to happen, and we have to think about how do we serve that as we go into an electrified economy, and as we look at clean energy and the needs for it, and what is being demanded. So I share that with you, because on the far left, you know, it does show a load forecast, and it's roughly 100,000 homes in this area, in this vicinity. And, you know, some of it's, you know, is certainly going to be made up of industrial and commercial properties, but we're seeing heavy growth. What used to be a half a percent to a percent of growth annually is now pushing 4%. And that doesn't seem like a lot, but when you consider all of the Willamette Valley and the activities that are happening across the entire valley, that's a lot of work, there's a lot of growth. And I'll just say that when the system was really built out, the aluminum industry, it came in way back in the 40s, this is World War II, transmission was built, we built a lot into the system. That all left in the 90s, and we had lots of capacity. And then all of a sudden came chips, came all this growth that we're seeing from the 90s. And so you say to yourself, okay, we have now filled the system, and now we're having to look at how do we continue to build out this particular facility? So on the next slide, if we can, we were considering this area, and what were our options, and how could we connect together and provide the resiliency and the service that's needed in this area? And there were three options that we looked at very hard. There are 100 different line segments, so you can move those in a lot of different ways, but we started to think about, you know, what's the best, what's the best route? And so if we go to the next slide, you see the principles that we kind of go to, thinking about how do we avoid homes, buildings within 100 feet of the line? How do we impact the fewest number of parcels? How do we do the least impact to any sort of environmental, wetlands, or wildlife, or habitat, all considerations? And then you start to say, okay, well, let's think about the roads that are there, let's think about the right-of-way that exist, and let's think other projects, and in fact, Clackamas County having some road widening projects that are going on at the same time. How do we utilize those resources the best way, and linearly along? And I'll also say that I've been in this industry for 40 years, and we've been, there's a project here that's been in the works from Idaho to Oregon for over 21 years. That's the latest transmission line that's been trying to be built. And what I would say is, I'm not here to build new lines, I'm here to think about lines that currently exist, trying to use those as best we can. And if we have to rebuild those facilities, it's a whole lot easier, and it doesn't impact as many customers many times than putting a new line someplace. And so those were all considerations, you know, and as we think about proximity to schools or churches or other, you know, I'll say, public facilities, you know, where do we best put these lines? And so those were the considerations that we take at heart, and we think hard about. We've been working very closely with all property owners along the way. I'll say there's about two miles of line that has not been resolved in terms of property owners, and so we want to encourage and hope to continue to work to find ways to resolve any of the outstanding issues that may be along this route. But it is really important, and I think if we go to this, yeah, this last slide, you can see a timeline, the build-out, and what we're trying to avoid is what I would term as unfavorable consequences in the end. If this line isn't built, and I can see by the summer of 2026, we're in the stage of having to turn things off when we get to 110 degrees. We've come close. We've seen things this last three years. Should go back to 2020, the summer 2021, when we had the bubble, the heat bubble, 116 degrees. Who would think that Portland would ever get to that? And it was a shocker. We hit what I call saturation. Flat line, there was nothing more to turn on. There was no more air conditioners. And in fact, we, as, you know, citizens here, saw people die in that heat. So as we think about going forward, last summer was 110 degrees. We have seen what we've always said were the one-in-20-year events, we've seen them three years in a row. So I would just say, there's a change that's happening. We need to be responsible, to think about all of our customers throughout the area, and do the best thing that we can for everybody that's involved. So we want to work with everyone and find the best solution here. So with that, let me conclude my presentation and turn it back to you, Chair Smith, for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any Commissioners have questions? Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Johnson. I know he's excited about this.
Yeah, I'm super excited about that.
Or maybe he's legal counsel, so maybe we can pass the mic over to him, but going back to the procedures, right? The code amendment that comes, goes to the Planning Commission, comes to us for approval, is that necessary for the permit applications by PGE? Or are those two independent things that have nothing to do with each other?
They're two independent things that have nothing to do with each other.
Okay, so.
So they have the ability currently with PGE, I'm not going to even say, any utility has the ability to apply for a conditional use or an alteration of a nonconforming use where feasible. Correct.
Okay, so if the Planning Commission hypothetically recommends do nothing, what PGE is going to be applying for can continue, will continue.
Through the identified process.
Right, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, Mr. Beckdahl, on the three transmission lines that are going to be constructed, have the property rights issues on the Rosemont-Wilsonville and on the Sherwood-Wilsonville lines been resolved?
On the Rosemont-Wilsonville, no, and that is the, probably where many of the constituents here tonight and customers are associated with the Stafford Road there. Like I said, there's about two miles that is still unresolved.
So the McLaughlin-Tonkin line is not in the Stafford area, is that correct?
Got to go back. And that sounds correct, yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions so far? Would you ladies like to say anything?
No, ma'am.
You might mention the permits that have been applied for.
Yeah, I will follow up that. We do actually have a pre-app meeting scheduled for April 2nd. We are going through the permitting process, and so there is no expectation that the code amendment would, you know, help us in our project. We plan to go through the process as it is set for.
So the pre-application process you're talking about is with staff?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you two to sit down, and so we can have people come up to testify.
Thank you.
I have several cards here on this topic, and they have requested a certain order. There are 14 cards on this topic. First up is Greg Hathaway. Please come forward, introduce yourself, sir.
Good evening. Chair Smith, the members of the Commission, my name is Greg Hathaway. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Hathaway-Larson. Our address is 1125.
You will have five minutes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our address is 1125 Northwest Coot Street, Sut, Suite 550, Portland 97209. And I'm here tonight because I represent Save Stafford Road, which is a group which consists of over 100 property owners who reside in the Stafford Road area of Clackamas County who are concerned, and opposed to the PGE Tonkin Project as proposed by PGE. We'd like to thank you for the opportunity tonight, though, to make comments and remarks with regards to this project this evening. This is very unique. Most counties don't give folks the opportunity to do what you're doing this evening, and we appreciate the opportunity to express our thoughts and concerns. As you know, as described, PGE is planning to construct a new 115 KV high voltage powerline from the Rosemont Substation along Stafford Road to the new Tonkin Substation, in attendance to replace all of its existing facilities, which are much shorter, and of old wood poles, to very high poles, metal poles, with a high voltage transmission line, significantly different than what exists there currently today. It's just not a simple replacement of its wooden poles, but a significant expansion that requires PGE to acquire additional easements from members of Save Stafford Road. That's that section that you just heard the gentleman talk about, that two-mile section, where they're acquiring easements, and most of those are members of Save Stafford Road. My client has five major concerns about the project. First, it will adversely affect the character of the surrounding Stafford Road area based on the sheer size of the new poles and high-powered transmission lines. Second, it will have a greater adverse impact on the Stafford neighborhood than the current PGE poles and transmission lines, and threatens my client's safety by elevating the fire danger associated with proposed high voltage lines. Third, the Tonkin Project requires PGE to acquire easements from my clients to cut down substantial trees to build a project which further intrudes on their private property rights. Fourth, and I appreciate Mr. Beckendall from PGE's comment of the need for this project, but we've discussed with experts whether or not there really is a necessity for the Tonkin Project that would justify its intrusion into the Stafford Road area. The fifth concern is, even if there is a necessity, we are not convinced that there are no other viable alternative alignments that would avoid the Stafford Road area, and that's something that we want to continue discussing with PGE, as to exactly the alternatives analysis that they've conducted to determine whether or not this is the best alternative with the least amount of impact, which is the biggest concern that we have. The county does have a role in the Tonkin Project, and that's already been discussed with your staff just a few minutes ago. The legislative process that you were talking about, where you, at the end of the year, proposed amendments to your ZDO that would allow all public utility facilities by right, without any public process whatsoever, it would erase the old conditional use permit process, where you have to go through a public process. And we are on record with your board and your staff that we oppose that, because if that legislation got adopted, PGE's Tonkin Project could be allowed by right with no public process of any kind. It wouldn't go through a conditional use permit process. With the PGE folks that are doing, and we heard this tonight, and I appreciate their comment, they basically said, we're not interested in the legislative amendment. We're going to go through the permitting process. And they've applied for a pre-application conference with your staff, set for April 2nd, to determine whether or not they can alter the nonconforming use that currently exists, which is the existing poles and transmission lines. And that is one way to do it. The other way is a conditional use permit. They're basically the same in terms of the standards and the criteria, and the process is essentially the same. It's a type-two decision that can be appealed to the hearings officer. Your board, either with a nonconforming use alteration case or a conditional use permit case, will never be a decision-maker regarding this project. It will be by the hearings officer, probably if there's an appeal, and then that would go to the Land Use Board of Appeals. But in either instance, whether it's a nonconforming use process or an alteration of nonconforming use, there's one critical standard that PGE has to meet. That is, what they're proposing does not substantially alter the character of the surrounding area. We think that's a tough burden for them. We don't think they can make the case, at least with regards to the Stafford area. That's my time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does staff wish to opine? Dan Johnson.
No, I do not wish to opine on that testimony. I guess the one thing, a point of clarification I just want to make for the record is the fact that when we approached the Board of County Commissioners about the interest in a possible amendment, the board clearly stated to us, this is the starting point for the discussion, not the ending point. And there was dialogue regarding that it will go through this public process with the Planning Commission, that public testimony will influence whatever recommendation comes forward, and there will be, that's a time and a place for that discussion to take place before the board considers it. But again, I just want to highlight the fact that your direction to us was, start here, and we'll see where the discussion ends.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Up next, Ed Wagner, sir. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes, and you have lovely photographs for us. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Do you want to present those? How do you want to put those up?
Could I stand and present?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, okay, great. All right, thank you. Okay, before my time starts, I want to thank you. Okay, my time to start now. All right, my name's Ed Wagner, I live on Stafford Road. I'd like to recap some of the major catastrophic fires we've, you know, experienced over the last six years. Each one of these fires was admittedly started by an electrical malfunction, whether it was natural or old equipment. The Paradise Valley wiped out the entire town of Paradise Valley. Eighty-five people were killed. PG and E, just to differentiate, was settled $13.5 billion. Shortly after that, they filed bankruptcy. In 2020, we all know about the Oregon Labor Day fires. about the Oregon Labor Day fires. You know, that was a situation where about $400 million have already been assessed with Pacific Corps, and recently, the state of Oregon and the U.S. government is threatening to throw a $1 billion lawsuit at Pacific Corps. The Lahaina Fire, everyone's familiar with that. 100-plus people died there, wiped out the entire town, and there's 12 lawsuits against Hawaiian Electric, and importantly, the executives and the board, excuse me, the board. And lastly, the Texas Smokehouse Creek Fire, which is still smoldering as we, today, has burned over a million acres and 3,000 cattle. And the last thing I'd like to say tragically here locally, three people were electrocuted in Portland with a downed power line in this January with the ice freeze. I'd like to show this picture in particular. This is a picture of what started the Texas Fire. You can see there's a power pole on fire there, and that's what caused it. Some guy got a picture of it before it hit the ground, and it just took off. The reason I bring that up, you'll have to look at this a little carefully. This is my power pole in June of 2020. You can see the PGE bucket there, the PGE technician trying to put the fire out. It took, it took three hours to get it done. This is at the bottom of my hill. We were very lucky that day that the wind wasn't blowing in an eastern direction, because if you look at that fire, that is this post right here. And that, you know, you can see, this is up, my property's up above, this is down the hillside. And the reason I show this in kind of a kludgy manner, I apologize, I'm not a geographic scientist, that what I'm showing here is, this is the kind of power pole that's going to be put up all up and down Stafford Road. Our current poles, the wood one you see here that burned up, is 40 feet. This one's 100 feet, and this string here represents kind of-
Go ahead.
This represents, thank you, the line and the towering of the pole that we will now have up and down Stafford Road. Oh, 10 seconds. My whole point is, overhead power lines are dangerous. Weather conditions, PGE represented just mentioned, 110 degrees, 116 degrees, that really can set a field on fire very, very quickly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Up next is Loretta Smith. Loretta Smith.
Welcome. I have not seen you in a very long time. And look at, please introduce your name, your area of residence. You have three minutes. My name is Loretta Smith, from Portland, Oregon. Here on behalf of the folks from Stafford Road, and I just want to say ditto, ditto, ditto. Chair Smith and commissioners, as I was listening to one of the residents about the potential of the fire, the fire potential is real. And I would really like to urge you to take, take your time. Take your time and look at this, if it has to go to a hearings officer, because there is a possibility that the Oregon Legislature will look into this. We talked to Senator Golden this past session, and he was very, very concerned about this. He was concerned, and he said, when I, the last time I talked to him last week, he said, "I may try to put a fire prevention bill up." And if he does that, if we, if, if there's no urgency to what they have to do, I think we can wait. I think we can wait and make sure that the people, there are 100 folks who live in that area so that they are safe, and the safety issues are real. And I don't know if you did see those folks who, who were electrocuted with those lines in January during the storm. It was horrible. And the baby, there was a good Samaritan who was down the street, and she ran and got the baby out of the car. Her parents were electrocuted to death, because once they got out of the car, they were sliding, the line was down, and both of them were electrocuted. And then it was this precious little baby, about eight, nine months old, and she took a chance and went and got that. I mean, that issue is real for the folks in Stafford Road. And I think where we are right now, we can stand, we could, we could wait just so that we, we get it right. There is a thing about getting there fast and doing it quickly, but we want to make sure that we get it right, and that they have an opportunity to feel safe in their homes, and that they have an opportunity to keep what they have, or, you know, at least have a little bit more time to work with PG&E to see if there's something, if there's a middle ground. But right now, it's a huge safety issue, and I just wanted to urge you to take your time and let them have a little bit more time.
Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you so much.
Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Marlene Riser. I live at 22560 Stafford Road, and my husband and I are both lifelong residents of Clackamas County and have lived out there for 20 years. So I'm here to voice our strong opposition to this project. I'm also speaking on behalf of our neighbor Jerry Dick, who is unable to attend. Our reasons for opposition are loss of property value, loss of trees and vegetation, and loss of quality of life, not to mention the safety factors. Our five-acre properties were established in the 1980s with houses and outbuildings being built close to the road, as Stafford was very rural then. We own 750 feet of road frontage, and PGE has requested 7,550 square feet of easement to install three poles, one of which blocks our sightline out of our driveway. Will have to be moved and possibly require even more footage. This project will remove 48 mature trees and vegetation. Jerry's property involves four poles and at least 20 trees and vegetation. Besides loss of trees and vegetation, we're concerned about the power these poles transmit. They're 100 feet tall and two feet wide, carry 115 KV of power, replacing our 40-foot poles, which carry 12.5 KV. We understand they can be turned off in case of fire, but can they be turned up? And if they're turned up, what is the maximum capacity? They say the trees will be replaced, but the trees can't be any taller than 15 feet and not within 50 feet of the poles. With these and other easement requirements, the land is basically useless to the homeowner. If Clackamas County accommodates PGE by removing the cup processes, which is what I understood was on the table, that will leave residents on their own to defend their property values, as PGE has not been truthful or informative about what the project actually involves. This benefits no one on Stafford Road, but I feel, and have been told, it's a pathway to future development as far as way as Sherwood, which we talked about, and it gives PGE their own substations and out from under Bonneville Power Regulations. PGE's calculation of values differ greatly from Clackamas County tax assessments. If this project is allowed, we will have no choice but to seek legal counsel to obtain fair market value or fair market compensation and protect our quality of life in rural Clackamas County. And here's the pole. We all have three on our property.
We have seen pictures of those poles. I think you asked a question?
Yes.
Regarding turning up KV's? I didn't understand that. Was that directed at PGE?
Yeah.
Okay, would you repeat your question?
Can, we understand that they can be turned off in case of disaster or fire, and they carry 115 volts. Can they carry more? Can you turn up power?
Thank you. I appreciate the question. And first, let me just say that the, what we deem, we call it public safety power shut-off now. So if conditions are right, and I'll have to admit, I worry about 1940s vintage equipment.
Exactly.
And, and I worry about how tall the trees are associated where the lines are, because either blowing into or branches coming onto ignitions become very concerning. And the gentleman showed a picture of that at his home. So, so we're very concerned about fires, and how do we address that? So, yes, there's ways of hardening. So, as the picture showed, wood poles, concern. Do we go to metal poles?
Right.
Do we, and this project would do that. The 115 KV lines would be up above the trees. That's not the worry. It is the distribution. It's the 15, or the 12 KV lines that are down below. That is, tends to be the most worry in terms of wildfire. So I just share that as food for thought. But you can only turn the 12 KV up a little bit in terms of the amperage. You can put bigger wire-
The existing poles.
The existing poles, you could put bigger, well, you can't even do it on the existing poles. You'd have to change the poles out, put bigger wire on it, and you get a little bit of extra capacity. It would be a neighborhood-type thing. But it doesn't, doesn't provide, as you were pointing out, our interconnections with BPA. We flow together. We are a network on the transmission side. And so for us to support them and them to support us, we need the transmission. So we can't do that with the distribution voltage of the 12 KV.
But can they be turned up?
And by turned up, what?
Can they produce more?
We can increase the, we can increase it to maybe, I'll say, 34 KV instead of 12 KV?
No, I'm talking about the new poles.
Oh, can they be-
They, the new poles that are going to carry 115-
Yes.
KV's, can they be turned up to, to produce more power?
Oh, yeah, they will, absolutely. The 115, the 115 KV is the higher power, if you want to think of it that-
Can they go above the 115, is what I'm asking?
Oh, no, no, no. The insulators, the way it's constructed, it's built at 115.
Okay. And the, and I guess while I'm talking to you, the other question was, we've been assured that they're safe to live around with all that power, but we have no documentation or data to prove that.
We'd be happy to, to share that information. Been lots of studies and, you know, done Electric Power Research Institute and others.
With these exact poles?
Yes, yeah. Happy to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming forward. Appreciate it. Up next is Anthony Barber. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith and the rest of the commissioners. My name is Anthony Barber. I live near our previous testifier on Stafford Road. As I said, my name is Anthony Barber. I am a professional engineer, and for over three decades, I have worked to assist communities to recover from disasters. I've responded to train derailments, chemical spills, aircraft and spacecraft crashes, hurricanes, and many large wildfires in California, Hawaii, and here in Oregon. Hundreds of times, I've walked through the ashes of people's homes, and I've tried to comfort dozens of people who have lost not only their homes, but in several cases, their family members to wildfires. Several of these fires were caused by above-ground electric transmission lines. I know the county is considering the changes to how projects are allowed to go forward. One such change here is the PGE's project. PGE says that burial of the new lines would be too expensive. Wildfire, though, may not be the only hazard. Fears of EMF radiation may sometimes be overstated, I admit, but there has been enough research to discuss what is safe. Studies have concluded that living further than 300 feet from a high-voltage transmission line is generally safe for most people, but closer than that, we still don't know for certain. In fact, a 2016 study showed that there was no evidence of increased childhood leukemia when further than 164 feet. I live on Stafford Road, as I said, and my home is 75 feet from the existing neighborhood distribution line. A new 100-foot-tall high-voltage line, if it is installed in front of my home, would push that line on a diagonal to no close, no farther than 125 feet from where my grandchildren often lay their heads at night. While I believe that the project PGE is proposing will have a large negative impact on my property value, I am very much more concerned that Clackamas County will succumb to pressure from PGE and to others to circumvent the conditional use permitting safeguards already in place. Those safeguards are there to help minimize the chances of such tragedies, as I have described, from happening to me, my family, and my neighbors. I very much understand the need to reduce undue burdens on our great, hard-working county staff, and I hope that we can do so, though, in a way that doesn't end in heartbreaking disaster. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming forward. Up next, Janice Hess. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
My name's Janice Hess. I live on Stafford Road.
Can you pull the microphone closer?
Sure.
Thank you.
I live on Stafford Road, and I'm going to read a letter that my husband wrote.
Okay.
Dear Chairperson Smith and other members of the Board, my name is Todd Hess. I live at 24416 Southwest Stafford Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about my concerns about the PGE Tonkin Project proposal route, proposal to route high-voltage transmission lines on a residential road. We live above Stafford Road and have a view of parts of the Willamette Valley and can see Mary's Peak west of Carvalis on a clear day. Janice and I purchased this property with a plan to someday retire here, which we have now done. We currently look over the top of the 40-foot power lines that are on Stafford Road with no impact to the view. The 115-tall power, foot-tall power poles will be right in the center of the view. This greatly impacts the enjoyment of the property and the value of the property. In preparation for retirement, we found a beautiful property retired, and now PGE wants to put an industrial transmission line right in the view. It's really upsetting and makes me angry. We don't want angry. The other big concern is fire danger. After the Paradise, California, and Lahaina fires, it's hard to fathom PGE isn't proposing underground lines. In other parts of the country, utilities are removing overhead lines and putting them underground. I'm sure underground installation costs more when installing new lines, but they should be installed with the least impact to the residents and in the most safe manner. My question, which hasn't been answered by PGE, is if these lines are required, why aren't they routing them along I-5 and 205 instead of a residential road? I've heard, but I don't know for a fact, that this would add about a half-mile length, which is about 5% increase to the project. This is a small incremental cost and eliminates routing along a large portion of Stafford Road. In conclusion, I'd like the Board to understand the PGE proposal will likely negatively impact the aesthetics of the neighborhood and put our properties at greater risk of fire. Please require PGE to route them along I-5 and 205, and if for some reason they have to be along Stafford Road, require them to be underground. Thank you.
Did you have a question for PGE that you wanted answered?
Yes. Why hasn't, why are they not considering-
A definite route.
The I-5-205 route.
Laurie, would you like to answer that question?
Yeah, I don't know if I have a really good answer tonight, and I apologize. Other than, you know, as I'm looking, you're trying to get into certain areas. And so, how do we get from Lake Oswego? You're still going to have to get down to the highways, and then routing along the highway, to your point. If you can do it, then you've got to come back out of the highway, back across other properties. So I can't answer that question. You know, I'd love to let us go back. We have your name, Janice. Appreciate it. And both you and Todd, be happy to, to come back with an answer. So, but I apologize, I can't answer that right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
So after the meeting, hook up with, exchange information, if you would. That would be, thank you very much for coming forward. Up next, Kelly Bartholomew. Hello. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Kelly Bartholomew, and I live at 22900 Southwest Stafford Road. My husband and I have raised our two boys there, and for those of you that don't know Stafford- Stafford, it's a triangle of land between three cities, Wilsonville, Toowaltin, and Westland, and it's considered unincorporated Clackamas County. So we, they're mostly five-acre plots. We do not have fire hydrants. We do not have public city water. So most people there have wells. When we have fires, we lose electricity. We can't power the pump for the well, so we don't have water. So this is our shop last summer, and we, when this happened, the fire, we didn't have water. The fire trucks had to close Stafford Road and shuttle water for 24 hours, basically, to get the fire out. And so I don't think our area is equipped to handle any increase in fire risk at all, because we have no way to put it out. And when I proposed this to PGE, I said, I mean, are you going to give us fire hydrants? Are you going to help us mitigate this? Because we don't have a way to put fires out. And the PGE response was, you're not in a high-risk area. So that was, so anyway, this is, was the aftermath of that because it took so long. And then, so that was the main thing I wanted to say in regards to fire, but the second is the impact on our community. We're part of, Stafford is part of what's called the Farmlandia Farm Loop, which is a rural farm loop that many people from Portland come to go to the farms around the loop in Stafford. And it's the last rural area between these three cities, and so I don't think driving through cut-down trees and 100-foot power lines is a great rural experience, and I don't know that the impact on these local farms has really been assessed. And also, I just feel like the communication from PGE has been less than optimal, and I just have been really disappointed. We, when this, you guys have been working on this for years, and we just now learned about it last fall. And when I tried to call people, it was, we're not available, we'll get back to you, nobody ever. And then when they finally got back to me, we arranged a meeting, and they came, and I said, can we have other of our neighbors come to the meeting? Because they have questions. And they said, yes. Well, 20 to 30 people came to my house to meet with PGE and discuss this. PGE didn't show up, and they sent a meeting, a letter two hours later that said, upon arrival, we were surprised to see well over a dozen vehicles in your driveway and became concerned that our meeting goals would not be tenable with so many people present. There has been, then the community meetings that you guys had, there were little set-up booths that we could go to. There was no format where our community could ask questions so everyone could hear, like, I mean, like this. It wasn't, it was like little booths that we'd go around to, and it was very not helpful at all. And so I guess I, I feel like that the communication has been poor, and also we have faith in our commissioners to help protect our homes and our land and our kids, and I am just hoping that, I understand it may not go through you, but if it ends up going through, I hope that you guys will give it serious consideration.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Up next, Eileen Hutchinson. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Eileen Hutchinson, 24024 Southwest Stafford Road. I'm a 27-year resident of Clackamas County. I raised my three children here, and I'm also a licensed realtor, and that's how I'm speaking out this evening. The house value loss for high-power lines was 30 to 40% on these homes. And all of you are familiar with Stafford Road, I'm sure. This isn't a typical neighborhood where there's little pieces of land that were five acres, and I would say, on the low end, the average home is $1.5 million. So 40% of that home value is a lot of money that PGE, I'm sure, is not willing to pay at this time. The tax effect of these, of the decline in home values will severely impact Clackamas County, because if our housing values drop 40%, we're all going to run to the courthouse to say, we want our taxes lowered to that tax basis. And that could cost, over the course of 10 years, tens of millions of dollars in tax revenue to Clackamas County. And hearing everybody before me asking for money and different things that they needed, that's a lot of money to lose for somebody else's gain. I want to start with, I want to interject with, a home is the most important asset most people will ever buy in their lifetime. That's what Warren Buffett said. Warren Buffett is one of the wealthiest men in the world, and he's saying that homeownership is where you make your money. That's the most important part. And if you look around the room, the average age of the homeowners on Stafford Road is 60. And if we, if we lose collectively 40% of our house values, we don't have enough time left to make that money back. We're going to lose all the work, the lifetime residents here on their multimillion-dollar homes, they're never going to get that money back. The way they were building wealth for the next generation, building wealth for their retirement, it's going to be gone, and it'll be gone forever, because there's not enough time left in our lives at 60-plus to make back 40% of our home values. And, you know, the people who live here have saved their entire life to move here. We moved out of a residential area in Westland, and we moved here, and this is where we want to live the rest of our lives, on this beautiful five-acre lot with Christmas trees on it. And, and now we're going to have telephone, we're going to have 150-foot poles. I'm going to have three poles on my property, and it's going to obscure my view of Mary's Peak as well. And it's not what we signed up for. And I don't understand how, how the need of so few for PGE, that power doesn't help our neighborhood. This is a residential neighborhood. It doesn't feel like one to people who don't live there, but this is our neighborhood, and it's going to be dramatically affected in so many ways if this goes through. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for coming forward. Up next, Joe Ratty. Did I say that correctly?
That's okay. Ratty is in Mazarati.
Mazarati, Joe Mazarati.
I'm feeling, thank you, commissioners.
Yes, please state your name, area of residence.
My name is Joe Ratty, and I live at 25015 Southwest Stafford Road. And I'm feeling pretty old, because we've been living on Stafford Road now for 38 years. So I've seen a lot of changes in our community, and I want to thank the county for the new traffic lights that have been placed at 65th and Stafford. I think that's really helped the traffic a lot. And I also want to thank the county, because every time my wife and I have tried to reach out to you folks or to the county staff, we've always been well-received and had a quick response to our questions. I don't want to repeat what everybody else has said. I want to talk about, what about the future? Now, as I understand it, from Peats Mountain West eventually is going to be developed. And that may be in the, in the long term, but what we're talking about here is an industrial-grade line of pole, utility poles that are going to be there for 60, 100 years, maybe? I mean, they're made out of metal. It's a blight, it'll be a blight on the landscape. I have a line of 50-foot fir trees along my property. These things will be twice as tall as those trees, and I live across the street from where the utility lines are. So I guess I represent those who are not being impacted directly by these, this new project as much as others on, on the side of the utility line. So I would just ask the county to consider what the legacy will be in terms of the future and what the Stafford area will look like. Are we going to preserve what is there, or are we going to permit it to be turned into a wasteland, basically, for the next 20 or 30 years until the vegetation grows up? But those 100-foot poles will still be there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming. Up next, Luda Green.
Good evening, noble commissioners. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to strongly voice my objections against PGE project, because it will immensely destroy and damage flora, fauna, and aesthetics of this uniquely beautiful area. But the most important, human life will be damaged and destroyed. Think about our children. Think about those babies. Whatever will be done to human life will be irreversible. So thank you for listening, and thank you for helping save Stafford Road, save flora and fauna, save human life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, I can't read the writing, but is it Kenny Lee? Lee, I cannot read on 22400.
Yeah, she has a medical issue. She's not able to.
Yeah, would you please sit down, sir, and state your name? I can't read your writing.
Yes, I'm actually John Landry. Kay Lee is a property owner on Stafford and Newland at.
And your name, sir?
My name is John Landry.
John?
Yes.
And your last name?
Landry, L-A-N-D-R-Y. And if I could, could I also have a minute for myself after?
I'm having trouble hearing you. Maybe you would like to move the microphone closer, because I know you want to be heard.
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you, Chair. Would I also be able to have possibly a minute for myself after reading Kay's comments? She has a medical issue. She's not able to speak right now.
You're going to read some comments, correct?
From Kay, yes.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay. She writes, "Good evening. My name is Kay Lee. My husband Jason and I live on the corner of Stafford and Newland Road. In the late 1800s, Jason's great-grandparents came from Yosha, South Russia, to North Dakota to Toowaltin, purchased a section of land from 65th over to Roblich Place, across from the school administration building. The great-great-grandparents raised their children, the great-grandparents raised their children, and Jason's grandmother moved across the street, where now three generations have and are still living today. 143 years is a long time to be in the same location. In the 20s, a grocery store, gas station, and mechanical garage, and feed store all stood on this corner of the road. In approximately the early 30s, Jason's grandparents and great-grandparents gave up approximately six feet on each side of the cow path to be able to have a market road for the farmers to get their goods to market. In the mid-1970s, Jason took over the home as his full-time residence. And in the 1980s, the utility company, PGE, moved power poles and wires closer on our property without any kind of communication or notification." This, this again, as we've looked up through all titles, deeds, and everything, there, the county doesn't even have an easement with their properties out to almost the center line of Stafford Road. The utility company wants to remove and remove and replace with a metal pole and gain no less than 30 more feet from the center of Stafford Road, which will place these wires approximately 15 feet from their living room and bedroom windows of a house that's been there for much longer than the power has. There's never been an easement on this piece of property on Stafford Road or the Newland roadside, and they've checked it through First American Title and Trust as well. Additionally, with moving the wires in without permission or any compensation, they cut out a 70-year-old myrtle, myrtlewood tree and medron tree to the point of killing them and having them be removed in approximately 1999. Now, PGE wants to go up and down Stafford Road and destroy the beautiful country road so they can install massive high-voltage power poles and lines that will not benefit anyone in our area on Stafford Road. These 100-foot-tall poles and lines will be towering above our property. That will be a real danger for both fire risk and the potential of arcing and flashing. And let's not forget the humming or value of loss to our, loss of all of our homes, value loss to all of our homes. We have been told that no metal roofs, fencing, or equipment can be used under these lines, so how dangerous actually is this? As well, what about all the children that will be at risk standing under these lines waiting for school buses or playing for any significant activities? We are adamantly against PGE's dangerous and reckless destruction. This part of Stafford has always been a farming and rural residential area. A convenience for PGE's plans should not trump the safety and character of our long-established community."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Up next, John Landry.
That, that again is me.
That is you.
That is myself.
Okay, and I'm confused about the person with the last name of Lee.
That's me.
Would you like to come forward, ma'am?
I'm just not feeling well.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I had trouble understanding, but thank you for attending tonight.
Yes.
And thank you.
Okay, but I would like a minute of personal time.
Would you please sit down? I, we can't hear you standing.
May I have like a minute of personal time to actually go over my own personal? This was a statement for the Lees that I read for you.
Go ahead.
Okay.
You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. I'm John Landry. I'm an Estacada resident and have done much work for my friends, Kay and Jason Lee, both as a friend and as, you know, working for them on all their farms throughout this whole area, including in seeing the results of many of the fires and stuff that are over there. I really wanted to respond to this because I'm actually a previous victim of both Clackamas County and PGE, having lived in Camby, along the south side of Camby, near the Rod and Gun Club. And when the county decided that they wanted to have a bypass to go over to the Malina Road Airport area, they actually put a new road in behind the, from 99E, behind the high school over to the area directly in front of our property. And in doing so, again, we were another farming property that had been there for many, many years and did not have any of the easements that were required. So with the county coming in, actually, through, I guess what you'd call eminent domain or adversarial possession of the property, we lost approximately, approximately a dozen Portalford cedars that were out front for the PGE wires to go out in the front of Southeast 13th, as well as numerous black walnut trees that we had, all for a windbreak for our farming property. That again, ended up in the very end not being resolved in a, in a good manner for my parents and I, who both co-own property there. It ended up being much too archegren, not getting the value of the, the trees or anything else replaced properly, and the amount of money that it was going to cost us to actually seek, seek the restitution in court would have basically made it a wash, so we decided not to continue to go through it. As well, right after we did finally sell our property, which is now houses, because of another threat of eminent domain, so that they could, the city of Camby could now access a, a pump station that they were building down off of Malina Road. We ended up selling our property there, our farm, because of the other two properties having already been sold to a developer who was pushing that through. So we moved into the Tonkin area, yet another one that we've been speaking about tonight, and suffered through approximately two years before finding our new property in Estacada, the water, water project that has been ongoing throughout that area, which coincidentally destroyed with the expansion of the road on Tonkin and Basalt, destroyed many, many of the trees and the vegetation along our roads, as well as the blueberries and of Arbor Vida. So, yeah, it, it does happen.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Up next, Carol Schaaf. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Carol Schaaf, and I live at 21929 Southwest Stafford Road. We've not been approached by PGE because we're on the other side of the road, but we do look directly where these power lines would be. We would also be hearing the humming. And we've been a residents there for almost 20 years. My great-grandfather owned both sides of Stafford Road since 1906. We just own a small portion of that left in the family. The reason I'm talking tonight is that there are many, many reasons why the high-tension lines should not be placed on Stafford Road, and I've agreed with everyone that spoke prior to me, and you also agreed, that both the current power lines and the high-tension ones are fire risks. So maybe perhaps to bury them is the right plan, or to move them down to 205. The reason I'm actually speaking is because the mission for me- The reason I'm actually speaking is because the mission for me, as one of the many missions that haven't been spoken about yet tonight, is the creatures that are in our area that are going to be subject to damage from the power lines. And specifically, and I have video proof, and I do have photos of both the paragon falcon that lives on our property and the American bald eagle that lives just adjacent, that we can see the nest. And its flight pattern every single day is actually right over the power lines that are currently in place on Stafford Road. They would be impacted by the higher power lines. Bald eagle is currently not an endangered species. But we are to be really careful with the way that we proceed. Because even though they're not currently endangered, they are still our national bird. The bald eagle reuses the same nest year after year unless human disturbances. They're up to thirty-five feet tall, ninety-inch wingspan. They're beautiful and majestic. And again, I can provide you video proof of the flight that it takes on a daily basis over Stafford Road. The paragon falcon is something that I learned about when our young son saw the Wild Kratts TV show that came to Portland, Oregon, and discussed. And he started saying, "There's the paragon falcon. That's on our property." And it's nature's finest flying machine. The wingspan is over a yard wide at forty inches. Normal flight speed is forty-five miles per hour, but can go up to sixty-five miles per hour. I learned a lot of this from my son. And the diving speed is, of when it's attacking its prey, is two hundred miles per hour, making it the fastest animal on Earth, according to my son, too. The... In 1970s, it had declined and was put on the endangered species list. It has been taken off in 1999. But again, it is a concern, both those birds. And it does sound like you really are concerned with fire danger from both power lines. So, I'm glad to hear that you either will either move it or bury it. So, thank you very much.
Larry, thank you, Carol.
If I can clarify, thank you, Chair Smith. I said that the transmission was less of a worry than the distribution in terms of wildfire, because they're higher, not having the trees falling into them. So, just to clarify.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, John Leckus. Please state your name and your area of residence.
My knees hurt a little bit. I'm John Leckus, and I'm the president of Save Stafford Road. So, my address is 21956 Southwest Stafford Road.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. So, I just... I was gonna come up and make a statement, but I thought maybe I'd just start with my questions first. So, what... One of the previous testimonies asked you... What was your name again? Your name.
Larry Decadell.
Larry. So, why is it you didn't choose to run this particular line down 205 and I-5, all the way to the corridor there, and then run it down, you know, towards the road, you know, from 205 to Rosemont? Why did you decide not to do that?
Like I said, I don't have an answer here this evening. But I would say you're gonna have to come off the highway somewhere. You're gonna impact property somewhere. And so, there is...
Well, it's much more de minimis along there. And I checked with ODOT, they have not even heard from you. I mean, that's a fact. You haven't even explored it, and you're gonna ruin our neighborhood. I mean, I don't understand where you're coming from. It seems irresponsible to me. No?
No.
Hello? I'm just saying.
I'm hearing your comment, thank you.
What is your cost of this project? What is your... What have you guys totaled out?
The line cost right now... Total cost of the project, fifty-eight million dollars. The line cost is eighteen million. And I see Meredith wanting to step up here to say a few comments, maybe in response to that.
Meredith, will you want to take a seat next to John? And are you wanting to answer the question?
I would want to answer the question.
John, is that okay?
Okay, go ahead.
So, we have been in discussions with ODOT, and also...
Would you speak into the microphone, please?
Sorry, we can't run it along that. It doesn't... They're not allowed to run along the freeway, so it...
And that isn't true. I checked with ODOT, and as long as you're outside the right-of-way, you can. And if you go from Wilsonville down to Salem, you can see power lines, both yours and VPAs. So, that... I don't think that's true.
There is, and we'll follow up with that. But there is not room in that area. We have looked into running it along.
Maybe the comment, John, would be that...
Can I see your study? Can I see the study that you did?
We'd have to acquire easement outside of the right-of-way. So, if ODOT says you can't be in the right-of-way, we've got to go outside the right-of-way.
Well, I've checked with ODOT, and you can do it. And if you have a study that shows me that you can't do it, can you show it to me?
Happy to come back. Because there is regulation as far as traffic and hitting poles that are along a highway. The highway department becomes liable for that. So, they ask that they do...
I'm familiar with the Eisenhower bill, I get that. But I've checked with ODOT, and they've said if you're... As long as you're outside the right-of-way, just like from Wilsonville down to Salem, you see all those power lines. They're just outside the right-of-way. They can do it, and that would be ninety percent less impactful than what you guys are proposing. Got another question for you. Let's see here. Hold on, I gotta get my glasses out of here. Hang on. Oh, yeah, what are the number of the full-growth trees that you're gonna cut down for this project? Because with the high-power lines, you pretty much gotta cut all the trees down, right?
Not for the high, but for the lower distribution? Absolutely. That's where the conflict comes in. So, I don't know if, Meredith, if we have a number of trees?
We don't have a specific number, especially because we have been working really hard with property owners to try to save as many trees as we can. We could, at the end of that, get a specific number.
Can you give me that, too? Please. And then, I want to put a number on this, too. They said the total cost of this project's fifteen million. By circumventing the rules, right? By not going through the condemnation process, homeowners are not gonna get paid, okay? And I want to give this to the council. I know you guys got some barriers here. But PG offered me eight thousand dollars, and I spent some money. I've got a hundred-and-forty-page appraisal on the real damage to my property. It's four-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars. So, by circumventing this process and not going through the condemnation, by not going through the condemnation, that's gonna save PG twenty-five million, nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars, approximately, for a total cost of a project that's fifteen million dollars. This would add twenty-five million dollars. By ballyhooing the commissioners and changing the rules, they're gonna screw property owners out of about twenty-five million. I'm not for that. And so, I'd like to submit this to the commissioners.
Sure.
I'll give you a copy of that. And so, you know, really, and you don't have your screen up here, sir. You guys said that you've gone through and tried to make, you know, look at everything and be good citizens, correct? And try and look at all the possibilities, right?
As many as possible. And when people bring them to us, we'd love to look at more. Yeah, that's what I say. We've tried to bring that out, and that's why we want this to be an open and public process.
So, I've got the report card here, if you don't mind me reading it. I've got it right here. Says here, "Against PG, issued a hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-five-hundred-dollar staff citation for safety violations." And this is just on one fire, the ZOG fire. "I've got others, but I know we're limited on time. Issued an administrative endorsement order penalizing PG twelve million and ordering corrective action. Issued a five-million-dollar citation for PG's failure to thoroughly inspect transmission lines. Issued a two-and-a-half-million-dollar citation for PG's incomplete distribution pole inspections. Issued a directive to PG with corrective actions for the utility that must it must take regarding an incident with the cell untreated poles." I mean, it goes on and on here. Ordered PG to enhance its public safety powers. Ordered PGE to correct the mobile app for customers. And you guys are gonna waive your rights to oversee these guys, and this is what you guys are proposing legally. They're gonna waive all that with the current ZOD that you're gonna look at in June. You're gonna give these guys carte blanche, and you're not gonna monitor them. I wouldn't let them run a popsicle stand without monitoring them. So, my view up here is... And this is what I'm gonna ask from the council. Would you please put this off? We're also working with Senator Golden and Senator Wagner to come up with a fire prevention program. We would've done it... I would've got a minute on some of these bills on the last legislative, but I was too late. We've hired Loretta Smith to help us. Senator Golden has offered to have me testify in May, which I know you know the informational deal, and to come up with a fire prevention program that protects neighborhoods, allows PG to put transmission lines in. We're not opposed to that. Like I said, you can run them down the freeway. Might cost you another five million instead of screwing us out of twenty-five million. And if we can come up with a good fire program, and on that basis that you guys decide you want to run them down Stafford Road, okay, fine. But what I'd ask the commission today is to put all this off until we can come back with a study that protects everybody. And I'm not saying there's anything wrong with PGE, but they've been fined numerous times for safety violations. And I just don't think we should turn that power over to them. I think we should look at that a little bit harder. And so, I'm asking the council to just put everything off, put it down the road until we can take a real hard look at that and make sure that all this makes sense and it's safe and sound. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Was anybody on the sidelines over there care to comment?
Probably should, Chair Smith, is that there is a process certificate of public inconvenience and necessity, which does get to you the condemnation process, which if the... That would be next step in process, which then goes to the Public Utility Commission to review, again, the reason for the public necessity. And that gets to John's request. So, I appreciate it. Thank you for the information. Would love to see your information on the safety information as well, if you don't mind sharing.
I'll trade the information.
That'd be great. And we'd love to work with you, John. That's... We want to be open in this. Don't have anything. We want to be transparent and share as much information. And we're here to also hear good ideas. So, not rejecting that at all.
And, you know, really, I think there's a little confusion here, both on the process, the legal process, what their possibilities are in terms of alternative routes, and also, you know, how do we manage this fire thing? You know, what these people have come up and testified to is... I mean, it's legit. So, rather than rush into it, why don't we put it off a little bit till we can, you know... Till we have all the facts straight?
Well, I thank you for bringing up these issues tonight. It's been very enlightening. I have two more... Oh, excuse me, Mr. Savas, I didn't see your button.
Yeah, I have just a question for staff. Thanks, John.
Hey, thank you. Thank you very much.
I am gonna have staff do another run-through.
So, it appears to me that there's some confusion between the two processes. And if my earlier question and the response to my earlier question is accurate... Dan, I guess I'm looking at you. Don't want to put you on the spot, but there you are. If they're not associated with one another, is there any harm, frankly, in postponing our code amendment and let this process take place on its own? So, there is no confusion?
Well, you've already heard that PGE plans to go with the current process.
Right, right.
The amendment package is not solely around power. That was a discussion on the diversity of utilities we're talking about. These are underground. Let me back up. The board can choose to do whatever the board wishes to do. If you want to delay the proposal, we can delay the proposal. But it's the nuance around the different types of utilities that we're dealing with: underground, sewer, sanitary, storm, water service, conveyance, pump stations. You know, the term "utility" is not specific to simply this issue right here, so...
Right, I understand that. If I understand it right, I do remember the session we had months ago. And that was, this has been in place for a long time, and it came to light as a result of this application or interest in this application. So, it doesn't seem like whatever it takes to post... If it was, if the board agreed to postpone the code amendment process, if it is truly unrelated, it might clear up that confusion. I just... It's viable to do it. It can be done. I'm hearing that, right? Okay. So, not a discussion for today in detail, but I'm just concerned that people are making the relationship between the two. And if it's not related, it might be cleaner just to separate them for a period of time and postpone the code amendment.
Thank you. We have two more cars for people who want to testify not on this topic. But does staff want to give any more concluding remarks before we move on?
Only if the board has specific questions for counsel.
Okay.
Chair, I do have one question.
Before we move on from this...
I didn't see your light mark. No, go ahead.
Before we move on from this subject, I do have a question for Mr. Decadell. Sir, in 2020, fires in California resulted in Pacific Power having to pay out, I think, the billions in damages. And we had fires in this county that year, too. Now, our fires caused us to be looking at the potential for moving some of our transmission lines in some areas of the county underground. So, we've had dialogue with PGE on this because there is both a safety concern and a potential reduction in liability concern on the part of PGE should one of the transmission lines cause a fire. So, we're waiting for information back from PGE on the potential for areas to go underground, at least along Highway 26, up towards Hoodland Government Camp. Now...
Oh, you want... Let's have Larry answer that first.
My question is this. During this... During this time, as you looked at your courses of action for the transmission line going through the area these people are concerned with, did you consider leaving the current distribution poles, the forty-foot, twelve-point-five KV poles, as they are, and then going underground in your easement to add in the additional transmission capability underground? Was that a course of action you looked at?
Yes, Commissioner Scholl, thank you. It has been looked at. And so, two things. One, the undergrounding of the Highway 26. As Clackamas County, we really appreciate the partnership. We have filed for a grant with, under FEMA, for fifty million dollars to see if we can achieve that. Combined with our own funds, then, makes it affordable to begin to underground in that area. And if you recall, when we had the Labor Day wildfires of 2020, that's the first time we did a public safety power shut-off, and that was all of Mount Hood. And then it came further down into around the area here. And so, we did end up shutting off quite a bit of Q areas. But that's what we were requesting is, you know, we'd love to have... And we are. We've had some other projects. is, you know, we'd love to have, and, and we are, we've had some other projects, we have another grant that we're filing for right now for another $100 million under a federal program, trying to keep costs down. I mean, clearly, we're feeling the pressure even right now on price increases. And so how do we make it affordable? We want it reliable, safe, and affordable, and how do we do that? That's, that's the challenge we have. When you consider, you know, a 10 to 20 times the cost to put it underground, because that 115 KV is not quite the same. It's a whole lot easier. Love to put the distribution underground, it's a whole lot easier and, and less expensive to do that than it is the transmission. So that's what we're considering, is where, where, and all avenues, whether you're going which direction, you wanna consider, again, who are you impacting? Is it safe? Is it reliable? Is it gonna give you the ability to move the power around to where it's needed for each of the communities, and at the same time, make it affordable for everybody?
Okay, thank you.
Before I go to Commissioner Savas, a point of clarification on the application for the underground power line, you wanna explain how that works for county council? Why we are applying on behalf of, partnering with PGE on that? It's not our project, but why is the county doing that?
So through the FEMA process, the county has to, through the state, there's a requirement that they have to be the lead party.
So in order for a utility to receive a federal grant, they have to partner with a, a government entity?
Yes.
We said yes. In fact, this is the second time we have applied for this, we were denied the first time, correct?
That's right.
And so we're reapplying. We do think this is a serious topic. We are trying to apply monies for underground power lines wherever we, wherever we can see the money from. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, I just had a question. One of the people who testified earlier mentioned the hum off the lines. Will these 115 KV lines emit any noise?
The hum is usually from a vibration, so loose hardware tends to, to cause that. When you get to 500 KV, you have a lot more, what's referred to as corona, and so you'll hear that buzzing more at the 500 KV level. 115 KV runs through a lot of areas, and I get, my hearing, especially as I get older, probably not so good, so I probably can't hear the 115 as much. But, you know, usually is when moisture is around, so if you get fog coming in, that's usually when you hear it.
Yeah. Well, I, I am familiar with the 500 KV, the BPA lines off of Red, I know they go through a lot of areas of Clackamas County, but they not only make noise and hum, but they, yeah, there's snapping sound all the time, so it's very unpleasant to be in that area. These are substantially lower, but there is a noise that will be emitted off these lines.
Yeah, if, if it's, if it's hearable, I've noticed it on the coast when you're in the salt fog. That's when I would hear it off a low voltage, like 115 KV. But in, in the communities here, I have not noticed it, but I, again, others probably have much better hearing on, on that behalf.
Thank you. Senator, Commissioner Savas. Oh, Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something. These are transmission lines, these are not distribution lines. What you're doing in the Stafford area is transmission.
So you're replacing the distribution lines underneath? The transmission are the three wires on the top?
Okay.
And then the distribution is still underneath? So we're still serving all the homes off that distribution that runs underneath the transmission?
And then I have a question about the PUC process. You can move forward with that, with condemnation, nevertheless?
So it is, it is a, another process by which applying through, and, and it's called a CPNC, CPNC process, and we file that with the commission. Again, they review the project, its merits, and then they consider all the land and land owners that are impacted, and it would go through with the official, as John was mentioning, condemnation, value of properties, all of those things as well. So it is a completely separate process, and open public hearings as well, that, that would be handled. And I, I know PGE hasn't been through that for many, many years. And I believe Chair Smith, possibly some time at Bonneville, I know I had some time with that. We went through a similar process there as well. But it, I would claim is kind of a last resort. It's not the, the thing that you, that either landowner tends to end up with a lot of legal cost. I will just say that, but, but, but it does resolve. It will resolve the issues going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Before I move on to the other cards in the room, Dan Johnson, would you like to sum up?
Yeah, I guess just for the sake of the public that's here and the, and the audience today, if somebody's listening on the TV, not just in regards to this application, any utility application that comes forward through a conditional use or an alteration of a non-conformal use, we will be providing notice. I wanna make sure you're aware of that. In this particular area, I think our notice requirements, and I'm looking back at Jennifer to make sure I say this right, is almost a half a mile from the, from the linear line itself. So be informed of the fact that you will be getting a notice from you, from us, if and when this application comes forward, unlike any other utility that would be applying. The distances may change based off urban versus rural for different utilities, but when an application comes forward, we will be notifying the public.
Okay. Any other comments from staff or PGE before we move on?
Well, just thank you for being here and making yourself available. So I think that's, that's a big step.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity and the chance to hear directly, so thank you.
And I would encourage anyone in the room who wants to exchange information with the PGE representatives, there's four of them in the room, please feel free to do so and enter into dialogue and conversation. Communications is the best way to solve problems. Thank you. Next up, Rick Dodge. Rick Dodge, are you in the room? He probably went home and said, "I'm outta here." Okay, up next, Jared Essig. State your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Chair Smith, commissioners, and citizens of Multnomah County. My name is Jared Essig, West Lynn, 1996. I've returned to the Three Rivers region after 20 years in Los Angeles, where I got my bachelor's degree and had a career as a software engineer. And I'm here today in my capacity as chief advocate of the Rose City Iron Front, defending constitutional government, rule of law, and Republican democracy. And we, as a civilian political and direct action group, we are anti-fascist, also anti-to totalitarian communist, and anti-imperialist. And we did advocate for police reform in 2020, but opposed the radical agenda of police abolition that brought about the crime wave and murder epidemic that the metro region is now suffering from. We did help to remove some statues from the pedestals, but we want the graffiti abated or the artwork to improve and be more morally responsible. We'd like to keep windows intact and dumpsters at room temperature. And we're asking for your help in liberating Multnomah County from the ghost of Vladimir Lenin. In the words of Mayor Wheeler on October 11th, speaking by unanimous consent of the Portland City Council, quote, "Terrorism in all its forms is a threat to peace, prosperity, and the values of our community. We vehemently oppose and denounce the actions of Hamas." Now, Multnomah County, your northern neighbor, to its discredit, made no such similar denunciation. And in the resolution that they took up last week, you might have heard about it in the news, they also failed to make any denunciation of the terrorist attack. I was in a room like this filled with hundreds of pro-terrorism activists. I can't tell you how chilling that is. You know, flooding public meetings with their demands and their blood libels, and calling for the destruction of Israel, while simultaneously on the other side of their mouth asking for a ceasefire. And that's why this is a local issue of public safety and behavioral health, and why the county, I think, should step outside of its normal procedure of declining to comment on such, such, such subjects by endorsing the words of Mayor Wheeler and the Portland City Council. The political compromise has already been done, and it should be fairly easy to, to make that statement. I also wanna thank Representative Heeb for meeting me in the state Capitol last week in an elevator, I'm hearing my pitch, and for walking with me to lobby some of his Democratic colleagues on a bipartisan compromise for House Joint Memorial 201, on our proposed amendments to it. Unfortunately, it died in the House Rules Committee, it didn't get a hearing. But also, you're gonna hear, well, I'm asking you to consider the, the resolution that Multco should have, should have made, which I've given in my written testimony, and endorse the bipartisan congressional letter from last July, calling for an end to pay to slay and an end to the Biden administration's support for Palestinian terrorism. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. I am out of blue cards for this evening. Tony, is there anyone online who wishes to testify?
If you would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you when the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting and move on. Gary Schmidt, what's next?
Thank you, Chair. Next is county administrator update, that's me. I'd like to share the great work of our county employees. Tonight, I'd like to recognize our staff of Public and Government Affairs. We have a YouTube channel for Clackamas County, of which these meetings, this meeting, all of your board meetings are streamed live and recorded for later viewing. This month, Clackamas County has passed 13,000 unique subscribers to the county's YouTube channel. I mean, it's 13,000 different people have subscribed who wanna watch our videos and get notified when there's new videos. How impressive is this? Let me tell you, this is more subscribers than Multnomah County, Washington County, the city of Portland, and Clark County, Washington, combined. Combined, we still have more subscribers to Clackamas County's YouTube channel than all those other jurisdictions. They all do a good job, but we do better. So I wanna thank our phenomenal staff in Public and Government Affairs, our video crew that's working here tonight to help make sure your message is getting out to the public. So thank you, Public and Government Affairs, that is my good news for tonight. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Gary. We now move on to Commissioner Communication. Up first is Commissioner Scholl.
Well, Chair, it's been a long meeting. I just wanna say that one of the great rights in the United States of America is the right to own property. It is a proven method for people to build wealth, and this property right must be held in high regard and respected. In any public taking of private property, we must never forget the high regard we must hold private property in. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
It has been a long day. It's been a long week. I don't have much to add to the conversation today, so--
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
I guess Commissioner Savas and Commissioner Scholl, I'm going to say ditto. It has been a real long day, and I do have things to talk about, but I can wait.
Thank you. I wanna thank all the people who came to voice their concerns tonight and engage in a dialogue with our staff and Portland General Electric on the future of the issue they are concerned about. Thank you, staff, PGE, for hosting this meeting tonight. With no further business, before this commission, we are adjourned.